At seven o'clock, I'm calling the Germantown School District Board of Education to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, stand if you're able, and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Special meeting notification, Dr. Reuter.
Public notice of all meetings has been given by communication from the superintendent's office to the public, to those news medias who have requested such notices, and the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, Northwest Now, Express News, and West Bend Daily News. Public notice has also been posted in schools throughout the district and the Germantown School District website.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Barney.
Medved?
Here.
Reineman?
Here.
I am here. Satterberg?
Here.
Loth?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Pollack?
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
Reineman with the motion, Mr. Barney with the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item three, reports. Item A, district administrator update, Dr. Reuter.
Welcome to spring with the first day of spring today. We're excited. I think we're supposed to have a softball game Wednesday, but I don't foresee that happening with the snow still on some parts of our fields, but we're excited for the spring season to start off. This is the last full week of school before spring break next week, so we wish all our kids an exciting break and parents and any trips travel safely. This evening, I would like to recommend or recognize a few staff members or groups of staff members. First, on March 2nd, and one of our FIAE teachers here at Germantown High School, Stephanie Milmo, saw a student that was in distress in our high school cafeteria, and she quickly and swiftly performed the Heimlich maneuver on the student and saved them from choking. So, I'd like to publicly, on behalf of the board and the school district, thank Stephanie for her swift action and being in the right place at the right time and knowing what to do. So, it's very, we commend her for her bravery. As well as, I have this evening, a document and a video that the GEA shared with us. I believe you, if you remember from last month's board meeting, they talked about random acts of kindness, and I think the board you were shared this full document. Each of our schools participated last month in February in random acts of kindness that were, you know, just shows our entire staff at every building, how they go above and beyond to help the surrounding community. And so, the GEA had asked that we share this video publicly tonight in thanking all of our staff members who participate in these random acts of kindness. So, you can see the kindness that was brought forth from putting together dog treats for the Humane Society to the St. Boniface Food Drive through the County Line Super Bowl. And I think one of the biggest ones I saw come through was KMS putting together food and supplies for families at the Ronald McDonald House. And it was shared by a few teachers how when they actually went to deliver, the lady who collected everything at the Ronald McDonald House broke down crying, it was one of the biggest donations they've had. So, on behalf of the board and the district, we'd like to thank all of our staff and the GEA for organizing this last month and a positive light of what's going on in Germantown.
Very nice. Thank you. Moving on to item B, Amy Bell Elementary Presentation, Mrs. Katie Cole, come on down.
So, this evening, we have Ms. Cole here, who has a brand-new boiler, if you haven't heard. She's going to be speaking this evening about 4K.
We have a very nice new boiler, yes, thank you. Tonight, we, instead of bringing in students, we wanted to talk about 4K, and it's kind of late for them, so I have the two 4K teachers here, Mrs. Stallings and Mrs. Heller. They both teach AM 4K at Amy Bell, we have two AM sections. So, instead of bringing the kiddos, we have a video that we're going to share with you first, and then I'm going to ask them to share a little bit about how 4K has been able to be incorporated into our bigger and larger school community with our kindergarteners all the way through fifth grade. But first, we'd like to you to see what a day at Amy Bell in 4K looks like. All right, so, like you said, we didn't bring our friends here, but you got to see a little bit of what they do each and every day. So, I'm going to hand it over to Rachel and Amy, and just, they can talk a little bit about how they have been incorporated in our school and in the school community.
So, at Amy Bell, we have Bell Fest every month, and this year, we are working on our character traits, and we have joined, I think, three Bell Fest, three or four Bell Fest this year, and we get to do buddy activities just like all the other grades do, so we're paired with the third-grade buddies. So, just today, we had a Bell Fest, and it was about cooperation. So, we went to the cafeterium with K through five, and then after that, we got to split in and go into our classroom. Third grade joined us, and we were able to do a buddy activity with the third-grade class.
Something that we did way back at the beginning of the school year, we tried it out, was at Amy Bell, they always have like a fun run, school-wide, and it was back in September, school had only been going a couple of weeks, and we decided to have 4K join in, and they were able to do all the obstacle course, have the popsicle treat at the end, and get to cheer on some of the other classes that were coming out, some of the other classes cheered them on. So, it was really fun to see even from the very start, how 4K is incorporated in the K through five school. So, it's been a lot of fun so far. So, we're hoping that we continue and get lots more fun with the older kids, and they're starting to notice them too, even one fifth grader today. Did they already leave? And I said, "Yeah, they only stay half-day." Well, next year, they get to stay all day, right? So, I said, "Yeah." So, we're just having lots of fun too, just, you know, meeting other kids in the hallway, passing them back and forth, so it's been a lot of fun. Do you have any questions for me or Mrs. Stallings or Mrs. Heller?
That's outstanding, you're making me want to go back to school.
We have a lot of fun.
I can tell, that's great.
I definitely have some questions for you guys. When it comes to the play-based curriculum, what part of your day with the kids is at the carpet with group time, and then what part of your day or how much of your time is actually with centers and learning and investigations?
So, in the morning, we have soft start when we come in, and then I, in my class, we do story, or we do our songs and story time, and then we have movement and bathroom breaks. So, that probably goes until about, we start school about 8:40, that probably goes until about 9:30, 9:35. And then after that, we have an hour of center. So, in my classroom, I break my centers into 10 minutes, and there's five centers with transition time in between. And then, at the end of the day, we meet back on the carpet as well.
Awesome. And they visit every center?
Every center, every day, yeah.
And if we have a kiddo that doesn't want to be a part of that center, because we know that happens?
Yes. So, what I've been doing lately, since they've been more into the routine, and I don't have too many who don't want to join anymore, but there are a few, but I have a little, a kit, like a clipboard and paper and crayons, and so they're still doing something. You'll say, "Can you write your name? Can you color this? Can you draw that?" So, even though they're not participating in what we're doing, we're still involving them and having them do something that is related to 4K.
Awesome, thank you. I was also going to say, at the beginning of the school year, we did more center work where they were choosing where to go, instead of having them work in groups, that helps build trust and relationship with us as teachers. And it also gives us a good idea of where they are, what they enjoy doing, who works well together. And so, then as we moved through the school year, then we're getting them ready more for 5K, so we do a lot more in small groups with handwriting and math, and they have built that rapport and trust with us, so most of the time, they want to come to the centers and they want to do what we're doing because they like us as teachers, they trust us, they want to be where we are, they want to be where their peers are. So, there's not as much resistance, because we built that trust and rapport at the beginning of the school year.
Great.
I just want to add, the ladies do a really nice job of having a lot of visuals, so the kids do know where to go and what the expectations are, and they also do a nice job of just changing up the activities. So, they are different, so they're exciting for the kids. And they, if we have some resistant friends, we have worked through that when that's happened, but I really think they have all come quite a ways since the beginning of the school year.
Wonderful, thank you, guys.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, great presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item C, internal communications presentation, Dr. Reuter and Ms. Mandy Race.
Yes, this evening, Ms. Race and I are here, we were here in January to speak about external communication and survey work that we did with our outside-of-the-school district stakeholders to improve communication efforts, and tonight, we're going to share our internal communication survey results. Often, Mandy will start in a minute, but she'll reference the district update, that is our internal bi-weekly newsletter that goes out that I often share with you about what's going on in every department and where we're going and what we're doing. So, I'll turn it over to Mandy.
Alrighty, so, last time I spoke to you, we did the staff as the second part of our communication plan. We moved on to the staff, so focusing on internal communications. This was the number of responses that we had by building, so in total, 238 people participated.
And that was all staff, not just teachers, correct?
Correct, it was all staff. So, the district update, as Chris said, goes out twice, twice a month, and it pertains high-level information from our directors, information that they find important and relevant to go out to all staff. And this just started in the beginning of September, and as you can see, the majority of staff find it very, find it valuable or highly valuable. Then, moving off to question number two, we asked about how often they would like to see it. The highest answer here was monthly, and moving forward, we are going to work together to determine for next year if we are going to stick with bi-weekly or monthly. Our concern with monthly is that if we don't send it often enough, the information might not be timely, and currently, the district update is about three to five pages with headers, so people can kind of skim through what they find is important. So, we don't want to run into the problem of having that go any longer, so that's something that we're looking at for next year. And then, we included another question in there, this one was more of an external focus, but also plays into the role of internal communication, so the monthly district parent newsletter that goes out to parents via email and then out to the community on social and our website. I guess with this, we just wanted to determine if staff is finding it valuable, and that in return helps us determine what we want to put in the district update. So, here, this shows that people are looking at it, they find it valuable, so that helps us craft the district update twice a month. And then, we asked about building principle, because communication is going out on multiple levels. We have it at a teacher level, we have it at a school level with the principals, and then we also have it at a district level. So, I just wanted to kind of gauge what staff were thinking in their building. The principals do a great job of sending out weekly information as some sort of newsletter, and then I shared this information, broke it down by school, and shared it with each of the principals. And then, again, this is just gaining more information of where people are looking for information, so the website, either sometimes or regularly, they're turning to the website. Moving forward with our communication plan, over the summer, one of the big projects is going to be looking at the website, how we can streamline information and eliminate clicks, so people can find information very quickly when they are looking for something. So, this year just helps us, it shows us that staff is also utilizing it, so focusing on information that's going out to parents, information that's going out to students, and then knowing that staff is also using this website, so whatever can be helpful to them. That kind of, it was short and sweet, so that wraps it up. This, again, is just part of our communication plan and building purposeful communication, not only for the parents and the students, which kind of everyone sees on the outside, but also for our staff, so that they feel like they're a part of a cohesive, strong Germantown School District team.
Yeah, one of the areas, you know, we have the district update to utilize as a focal point, so you can go back and reference, there's information, whether Mike added things in the beginning of the year related to insurance changes, those type of things, Brittany, Frank, everyone, Todd, everyone contributes Jake, and it's a reference point. So, one of the areas we want to streamline is not so many emails, because everyone opens their email account, and it's, then it's like, "Which email was that from? Where do I find that information?" So, we're trying to streamline through the district update, which we can then build back into our intranet, our internal internet, where staff can go in and find key resources, but they can also reference back to the update for more timely information. So, this data from the survey will help us navigate how to construct that, so that people know that they're communicated with and how to be communicated to, which leads to all employees being engaged in what they do every day.
And in addition, it's a touchpoint for leadership. So, the district office is at a different building, but it's an opportunity for us to connect with staff too. Anybody have any questions?
Mandy, as any true communications professional, you're a good storyteller, and I think you're doing a wonderful job in comparing year over year in terms of our communication, both external, internal, night and day. So, keep up the good work, you're doing a great job.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And I would also say that our staff has been great, Mandy's built a lot of connections with staff, and every, we meet every Monday morning to kind of set the stage, she kind of tells me the story she's going to tell for the week and some of the highlights, and now, it's like, which one do I pick from, because there's so many great things. So, it's just really, you know, built around Brian and her positive.
We're at the point of the year where a lot more staff have kind of realized what we're doing, and that, to me, shows that we're making improvement, and I'm able to showcase all the stories and not just, I'm really trying to make sure it's inclusive, so that we're including everyone, and I think more people know about it now, and we're getting that information out.
Great job, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item B, Board of Education Presentation, myself and Dr. Reuter. Just so those of you that may not know, we have two colleagues that are leaving us after tonight, this will be their last board meeting. We have Amanda Reineman, who's been with us for three years, and Bob Satterberg, who's been with us for 12 years. I'd like to thank both of you for your years of service to this district and to this board. I think you've been valuable assets to what we're trying to accomplish in Germantown, and all of your hard work over the years, much appreciated. Have a little something as a token of our appreciation for both of you.
It's Amanda's. Was it Amanda?
Amanda?
It's jelly of the money.
Bob?
It's not ticking, is it?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Very nice, thank you, guys.
I will open it up to my colleagues if they'd like to add anything.
Yeah, Amanda, it's only been one term for you, but you've definitely left your mark. I appreciate the time that I've had with you on the board, and I wish you luck in the future.
Thank you.
And same with Bob, you know, you were here president for many years, appreciate all your contributions to the board.
Thank you.
Mike?
Oh, yeah. Thanks for serving Amanda, and Bob, thanks for serving as a board president. I think Bob was elected one year before I was, and two years before Brian, but anyway, Bob seemed like an old-timer and knew what he was doing on the board, you know, for, especially for that first year, and he made a great board president for all the years that he was president, so thank you for that, really appreciate it. Hate to see you go, but I understand.
Bob, Amanda, would you like to say anything?
I know Bob does. No, it's been an absolute joy, the amount of time, effort, and energy that I have put in over the last three years that not many people know about is something that I will hold true to myself, because I have done everything that I wanted to do while I was here. And it's been a blast, but it's time for change, it's time for new people, and it's time for people to be kind to one another. So, I hope with the new change of things that that starts happening.
Thank you.
For me, 12 years, nine years as board president, it's time for change. I've got some elder care issues, both my side of the family, my wife's side, I've got two grandkids in Detroit I don't get to see. I had a Hurley that I didn't ride, but I sold it. Hopefully, I'll take out my golf clubs and play with them a little bit more. When I first came on board, it was truly about taxpayers. In day one, when you're here, you really learn that it's not about the taxpayers, it's about the kids, and there's a balancing act there. We've accomplished a lot in the 12 years since I've been here. The new board will accomplish many more wonderful things, I'm very excited about that. I'll be sitting out there, I'll be asking a lot of tough questions. No, I won't. You guys are going to do a wonderful job. We have two seats that are open, I'm excited about who will fill those seats, but all will be good, all will be good regardless of who's in those seats, because this board will always do the right thing for the kids, for the taxpayers, for staff, et cetera. I will miss you all, and it's been fun. To Amanda, it's been a blast, I agree, so, thank you.
If I could just add, on behalf of the administrative team, thank you both. Only I haven't worked with you for a year, you both gave me my first shot as superintendent, and, you know, I think the perception of board members is you come to board meetings, you read your packet, and knowing the behind-the-scenes stuff and the communications and dialogue, it's another full-time job, so I thank you both for your service and everything you contributed to make Germantown what it is today and set the course for the future.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to citizen comments, we have our GEA representative, Mike, come on down.
Good evening. My name is Mike Carles, I'm a special ed teacher at MacArthur, and I'm the GEA rep for tonight's meeting. Please let me know if you have any questions, and I will try to answer them if I can, I'll bring them back to the GEA leadership for a follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. All right, moving on to item five, approval of the minutes, February 27, 2023, Board of Education meeting, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the February 27, 2023 Board of Education meeting minutes.
Second. Amanda and Mr. Pollack with the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to item four, or I'm sorry, item six, Policy Committee, Mr. Barney.
Yes, Policy Committee met last week, we discussed many updates that came forward as far as recommendations from Niola, who we use for our policy updates, as well as a few updates the administration brought forward. A couple of highlights, we're adding a new standing committee to go along with personnel, policy, finance, building, et cetera, that would be the Teaching and Learning Committee, updating our presiding officer policy. So, if you remember last month, our president and our vice president were both unavailable, so then the role of running the meeting fell to the clerk. If the clerk had not been there, in my case, if I wasn't not able to be here, the policy didn't speak to who would actually run the meeting. So, the committee is recommending that the treasurer be added to that list, kind of the final officer position. That way, you know, we have it in policy of who's going to run it, and if that person's not here, then we wouldn't have a quorum, so we wouldn't be able to have a meeting. A consent agenda policy is being updated. This would allow us to group several items on our agenda and approve them in one motion, items such as donations, meeting minutes, contracts, resignations. We would still get a motion, still get a second, still have discussion, we would still see all of the background reports that go with each of these items, it just gives them, excuse me, gives us an opportunity to streamline some of the operational things. Our attendance policy is being updated to include some definitions for truancy, habitual truancy, and part of a school day. These definitions were located in other places before, but we're putting them into the policy, so it's a little more clear. Fun balance, that policy is being updated to set our goal for fun balance at 17%. We realize reaching that goal's not going to happen overnight, because we're barely reaching the 12% goal that we have right now, but I know we're headed in the right direction, and we're setting the goal at 17%. Our payment of invoices policy is being updated to say that invoices will be paid within 60 days, currently, the policy says 30 days. Probably saw a few different use of tobacco and nicotine policies in the background, one for staff, one for students, et cetera. These are being updated to specifically prohibit smoking, I think it was in there before, but not the way it is today, it said, I think, use of tobacco, so now specifically, smoking is being added, and also some references to marijuana and THC. Our facility policy is being updated to authorize the district administrator to conduct searches of non-student visitors or vehicles on school property when there is a reasonable suspicion of a violation of a law or school rule. Our use of social media policy is being updated to give direction to staff when using district-sponsored social media accounts. social media accounts. And our transportation policy is being updated to strengthen some of the language regarding audio and visual recording that we have on district-provided transportation. So, given that background, committee brings forward with a positive recommendation to approve the updates and modifications to District Policies 0100 through 9800, as discussed, excluding Policies 5517, 5722, 8800, and 8802.
Okay, that comes to the board with a positive recommendation. Does that require a second? Any discussion?
Yes. Just a little bit more background on some of the policies that were excluded. These were policies that we discussed at committee, but we needed additional information. Another one will come later, but later this evening. Other ones require some follow-up with legal, such as 5517 is our student anti-harassment policy. That's the one that we'll be following up later today. 5722 is on school-sponsored publications. Committee needs some additional clarification, possibly from legal. So over the next couple of months, we'll review that one again. And then 8800 is a policy on religious activities and observances. This one also requires some clarification from legal. And Policy 8802 is kind of a sister policy to that policy because they're pulling out patriotic observations from Policy 8800. So that's, that one couldn't come forward because we're not passing the updated 8800, so we wait on 8802.
Okay. Anything further?
I have a question for Brittany, and I mentioned it at the committee meeting, the 12% versus the 17% goal. What does that mean for the district?
Sure. Am I on? Yeah. It allows the district, if we would reach that goal, to then not have to short-term borrow. Currently, we short-term borrow twice a year, and our goal is to reduce them to not have to short-term borrow every year. And having the 17% would eliminate those two borrowings, which obviously we pay interest on.
12 wasn't a good enough threshold. The 17 will hopefully be.
Correct.
And for the search, a non-school person's vehicles and property, I believe we discussed that. And I'd fielded a couple of questions during the week regarding that. It's backed in case law. That's why Niola's bringing it to us in the manner that they did. There would be a law enforcement element at some point involved in that, but this is giving the district the ability to take action if needed in the lack of presence of law enforcement. It's my general understanding.
Okay. Mr. Pollak?
I was curious about that one because needless to say, I believe in limited government, and it seemed like it might be a little bit of an overstep. Was it discussed what this might be used for? I'm guessing it's not. Grandpa came to the PAC to see a play, and he left his pack of cigarettes in the car on school property. I hope that's not what it is.
I would think more in the terms of safety, safeguarding the school.
There could be a concern. When I spoke with Niola, this is common language that school districts are adopting, if there's a concern, to Mr. Ebert's point regarding safety, or someone possibly under the influence or carrying in alcohol, that we would say we're going to search your car until law enforcement gets here to make sure that it's a safe environment. If they decline, then they leave the property. But it gives us that ability. It doesn't mean that we are going to search every person that walks through this, the PAC doors or their vehicles.
And just a general commentary to what Amanda was saying about a lot of time. This particular packet has about 100 pages dedicated to policy. And even if you just read the green, which is the new parts of policy, it's a long read. It's a long time. And sometimes just reading the green doesn't tell you all you need to know. So you have to start reading the rest of the policy. And I'm a long, I'm a short, or how should I say it? I'm a slow reader. So most of my Sunday was spent reading policy. So I was, this is a perfect board meeting when Amanda said, yeah, it's a lot of time. No question about it.
We did discuss the number of policies and how Niola has a rotation. So when I follow up with our representative, I'm going to talk to him about breaking out into chunks and what's timely, especially since administration brought forward a few policies that were not on the list to revise.
Very good. Mr. Pollak?
I have a question on the consent agenda piece, where a member of the board may request and yet it would be removed or defer. Procedurally speaking, is that at the time that we receive our information? Or would that happen, or could happen, at the meeting itself to raise that objective?
That would be at the meeting itself. So there would be a motion to approve the consent agenda, and at that time, someone may state with, or modification to the consent agenda, removal of item C.
I believe a member could request any amendment to the agenda to the president and district administrator at any time, correct?
Correct.
So if they notice it ahead of time, they could push it out rather than the day of?
Yeah.
It could also get to the case where, let's say you've got six or seven items in consent agenda, you might hear a motion to just approve items A and B. Get your second, have discussion, approve those, and then have individual motions for each item after that.
Gotcha. Thank you. Very good. Anything further? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
All right. One other one that fits into this same topic is Policy 6470. We talked about it at committee. From the recollection that I remember, the full language that the committee discussed didn't make it into the background. So I'll give you a couple of seconds and then a motion on what I'm thinking we need to put in there. Policy 6470 is payment of invoices. There's a section in there where it talks about how many days we're going to have to pay it. And we just approved that. We'll change that to 60. There's a section that says, " exceptions may occur with finance committee approval only." At committee, we discussed adding for the opportunity for the board to be able to approve it as well, because there are some months where we may not have finance committee, or it may be an item that doesn't go to finance committee. So what I'm recommending, and I'll make a motion, to change the language in 6470 to include, quote, "exceptions may occur with finance committee or board approval only," end quote.
I would second. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes.
All right. And the next item on the agenda, item C, is Discussion and Action to Approve Modifications to District Policy 5517, the Student Anti-Harassment Policy. This was one that we needed to add some additional language after committee, so we couldn't bring it forward with a positive recommendation because we didn't have the language at the time. So I will make a motion to approve the updates and modifications to District Policy 5517, Student Anti-Harassment.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Sotterberg with the second. Any discussion?
I have some questions. While we have a great 13-page document here for our harassment policy, do we believe that our staff and administration are trained properly on how to handle these incidences, and as well, how to address them immediately and not turn a blind eye?
Yep. Good question. So we, if you remember, this policy came to the board in August of 2021. And then when I took over as superintendent, this was a policy I put at the forefront of some of our leadership meetings this fall to discuss operationally, because there was a technical change to Mr. Mizziak being our compliance officer. So we talked through what the compliance officer role is and does, and we've since then revisited the policy. It's been enacted by several of our schools for investigative purposes. But I think, to your point, Mrs. Reineman, this is an area that I know we can educate our entire staff better on in highlighting aspects of their roles, reporters, and then administration from a standpoint of, when is it building administration to contact Mr. Mizziak as the compliance officer? What does that look like, and almost a case study of that work? So it's a continue. We have done some training, but can we improve? Yes. And it is a 13-page policy. There's a lot of detail there, and really understanding even the key terms in this policy, what they mean, and what those definitions mean to each employee group.
Right, absolutely. And then during that training that I know will happen, or conversation to go through this, I believe there needs to be some more guidance and/or training on how many chances a student is given. We all know that every situation is different, but there are definitely times where you're like, why are we still dealing with this? So just to make sure that that's at the forefront and being discussed with administration so they know enough is enough.
And one of the ongoing agenda items in our safety committee meetings, as well as our bullying policy and discussing that. And then when you think about whether it's the harassment policy or our bullying policy, what is the progressive discipline, and what does that look like at each level, is something that we can do better as administrative team to calibrate around, and then think about those consequences as the administration is aware of what has truly happened from the evidence we collect. And there's only so much we can share to parents, to staff, to board in those times.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Mr. Pollak?
I have a question. It appears on page one. It's green highlight, violations of this policy that do not occur within the school environment or school day will be reported to law enforcement to investigate. Can we have an example situation that this would apply to?
Yeah, that was the modification Mr. Sotterberg brought forward. That's why we tabled it. Did you want to speak to that, Mr. Ebert?
Go ahead, finish, and then I'm going to probably be adding something to that, but yes.
Okay. I think often, you know, a student or students, or I think, Bob, you gave the example, are at Starbucks and do something stupid there after school, outside of the school day. But it's reported to the school. We saw two Germantown High School kids doing X, Y, and Z. We don't have a governing authority to issue consequences. However, if it was reported to us, we have the obligation to inform parents, and possibly, in the words in this policy, inform law enforcement because it's technically there. So the language is there to show that we're not turning a blind eye to things that we know maybe our students are engaged in, but we're, we have control of what happens during the school environment, school day. However, if two kids were messing around at Starbucks, and then that led to something happening in our school environment, a fight or a threat on social media, whatever, now we have that jurisdiction. So it's just the language. I think your point, Bob, was to make sure that it shows we're not turning a blind eye to what goes on in the community.
Yeah, this was, we discussed this a lot during our committee meeting. And the reason why is we can only control what we can control. We can't control outside of our four walls or address supporting about that type of thing. Times are different today, to Amanda's point about being nice, being kind. It's different today. You know, with two years of COVID and all the other things that have been going on, virtual, not virtual, TikTok. Five years ago, we wouldn't even have this conversation. But today, we need it because of the triple increases, triple-digit increases in self-harm, increases in suicide of our youth, of our kids. We need this. And we want to send a message that we've got policy here in the four walls, but also we talk about outside of the four walls. And we engage the appropriate authorities and the parents.
Mr. Ebert?
So to that exact last comment you made, Bob, I would like to make amendment to this particular line we're talking about, to read violations of this policy that do not occur within the school environment or school day will be reported to parental, to parents and law enforcement if necessary to investigate. I think there's some things that may not be warranted in a law enforcement status, but the parent should be notified specifically if we know their student's involvement in it. Obviously, you wouldn't report to other parents and other students, but specific to their student.
I'll second that. Would you, Mr. Ebert, I'm sorry, would you mind restating that one more time?
Violations to this policy that do not occur within the school environment or school day will be reported to the parents of our student or to law enforcement to investigate as necessary.
Thank you.
So I just want to get some clarification on that. Is that because if somebody is harassing somebody else, you want to make sure that the parents know about the harassment before law enforcement is brought in?
It would be, it's not or. It could be both, right?
Right. You said or, though, right?
I wrote and.
And, okay.
Sorry, and would be a better guess.
So example would be students come to a principal and say, hey, last night at the park, these two kids were making fun of or harassing the student. Technically, it's out of our jurisdiction.
Right.
But that would be interviewing, informing the parents, and informing law enforcement if it was deemed necessary.
The only reach we would have would be the athletic code of conduct.
Correct.
At that point. And that may not suffice to get the job done.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're still following protocol, right?
Both.
It's not just, hey, Mom and Dad, this kid did this. It's no, we've done what we needed to do to keep our kids safe.
My vision of it would be that notification, your child was reported to be involved in X, Y, or C, please talk to them. Also, by the way, we notify law enforcement if applicable.
Got it. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, we have a friendly amendment to that motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Anything else?
So my understanding is that amended the motion that I made?
Correct.
So now we need to vote on the amended motion?
Okay. We are now voting on the amended motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Yeah, that is all from Policy Committee.
Okay, very good. Moving on to item seven, Finance Committee. Mr. Loth.
Thank you. Finance Committee did meet earlier this evening. We discussed vouchers, and Brittany answered a few questions for us. Next item was Brittany's variance report, and I'll give the Cliffs Notes version here. We have spent less this year than last year. That number is $576,250. Revenues were a bit less also than this time last year. Good enough? Brittany's shaking her head, yes. It's a complicated topic, and Finance Committee is videoed. If you want to see the rest of it, I just suggest going and watching the finance video. Next item is Board Item 7B, 2023-2024 Student Fee Schedule. And the Finance Committee Brings Forward to the Board of Education with a Positive Recommendation to Approve the 2023-2024 Student Fee Schedule.
Okay, that comes to the board with a positive recommendation. Does that require a second? Any discussion?
I think, Brian, I'll just say, for all of these at this time, these were all discussed in finance quite thoroughly. And that's the video to watch if there's any questions, you know, from citizens on this.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Okay. Board Item 7C is 2023-2024 Facility Use Fee Schedule. The Finance Committee Brings Forward to the Board of Education with a Positive Recommendation to Approve the 2023-2024 Facility Use Fee Schedule.
All right. That also comes with a positive recommendation. Does that require a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Okay. Board Item 7D, 2023 through 2025 School Resource Officer Agreement with the Village of Germantown. The Finance Committee Brings Forward to the Board of Education with a Positive Recommendation to Approve the 2023-2025 Student Resource Officer Agreement with the Village of Germantown. We have one modification to item seven, changed to 60 days rather than 30 days as stated.
All right. That also comes with a positive recommendation. Does that require a second? Any further discussion?
Next item is Board Item Seven-B, Two Thousand and Twenty-Three, Two Thousand and Twenty-Four, Student Fee Schedule, and the Finance Committee brings forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to approve the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three, Two Thousand and Twenty-Four Student Fee Schedule.
Okay, that comes to the Board with a positive recommendation. Does that require a second? Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you.
Yeah, that is all from Policy Committee.
Okay, very good. Moving on to Item Seven, Finance Committee. Mr. Loth.
Thank you. Finance Committee did meet earlier this evening. We discussed vouchers, and Brittany answered a few questions for us. Next item was Brittany's variance report, and I'll give the Cliffs Notes version here. We have spent less this year than last year. That number is five hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Revenues were a bit less also than this time last year. Good enough? Brittany's shaking her head, yes. It's a complicated topic, and Finance Committee is videoed. If you want to see the rest of it, I just suggest going and watching the finance video. Next item is Board Item Seven-B, Two Thousand and Twenty-Three, Two Thousand and Twenty-Four, Student Fee Schedule, and the Finance Committee brings forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to approve the Two Thousand and Twenty-Three, Two Thousand and Twenty-Four Student Fee Schedule.
Okay, that comes to the Board with a positive recommendation. Does that require a second? Any further discussion? Mr. Barney.
Yeah, just for clarity, transparency, I guess, S R funds are being used to pay for this.
Okay. Very good.
I would just add, Jake was the one working on this plan. It's a matter of taking those one-time S R dollar funds, be used for one-time expense, and applying it in a manner that'll impact the district beyond that one expense. It's about developing the teacher's skills to impact the students in regards to the mathematics, so.
Very good. Anything further? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Okay. And the last item is Board Item Seven-G. This is iPad purchase. Finance Committee motion to bring forward to the Board of Education with a positive recommendation to approve the purchase of sixty iPads and Apple Care Plus from Apple for an amount not to exceed forty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars using Common School Library Aid.
Okay, that comes with a positive recommendation. Does not require a second. Just for transparency, what are those being used for?
These are being used in the, all the grade school libraries, so it'll be fifteen going to each grade school.
Okay.
Multiple curricular uses. So as Mr. Mizziak, I don't know if you want to jump in, Jake, but as he's shared, as they go through curriculum review process, they're utilizing different technologies based on the curricular needs.
So this is like the old iPad or Chromebook cart that used to get rented out, and you could use it for your school or your class? Go ahead, Jake.
Yes, they're using multiple curricular areas. One of the areas I could highlight where we've got a stable population of iPads, our classes use them. It's a way that they can create some self-directed learning with students, so our teachers can videotape a lesson, the kids can watch it, and then they can perform a particular skill, and that frees the teacher up to move around and get feedback. In our K-one-two classrooms, iPads are used a lot as part of the center work that they do for their literacy, so it gives them an opportunity to engage with their learning in a little bit different way. Now, the reason why iPads versus Chromebooks is just the iPads have some apps that are not functional on Chromebooks, so we utilize both technologies.
It exposes kids to two different operating systems, is sit here with one operating system and another, and it's part of just well-rounded technology use as well.
So we're not getting rid of the Chromebooks, we're just bringing extra iPads in to help?
Replacement of what we currently have that are outdated is, that's the use of this Common School funds.
Yeah, we just use similar dollars to replace Chromebooks for the same purpose, so this is the other half of that.
Okay. Anything further?
I may have misheard, but the dollar amount should be twenty-four thousand, one eighty. I think it was forty-two thousand, one eighty that was mentioned. I could be wrong, I could have misheard.
Did I transpose that?
I think, maybe.
I did? Okay, thank you for that.
You gave Jake more money.
Good catch.
I'm good, I'm good at that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Anything else, Mr. Loth?
That was it for Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Moving on to Item Eight, New Business. Discussion and Action to Approve Early College Credit Program and Start College Now Applications. Jake?
Go ahead.
So similar to what happened last month, I kind of brought them to you in two batches. I jumped ahead of myself a little bit, so you're getting a second batch. There were a couple of our high school kids who turned their paperwork in at the, you know, the three or four-day window between the board meeting and when they were due. So this is just an add-on. So in addition to the ones that were submitted in February, now we have a grand total of five students who submitted their paperwork to attend a higher institution for the fall term of the two thousand and twenty-three school year through the ECCP program. Four were approved in February, and there's one more additional student that I'm bringing to you tonight. This student is looking to take a coursework in French. All paperwork was submitted prior to the March first deadline, and then in accordance with the Wisconsin State Statute Thirty-Eight Point One Two, subsection one-four, the Start College Now allows high school students to take an opportunity to take college courses within a Wisconsin Technical College, and we had twenty-two students submit their paperwork for this. Six were in February, and then we've got six additional students who are submitting it tonight. The students are taking coursework in computer programming and certified nursing assistance. All paperwork, again, was submitted prior to the March first deadline.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the early, motion to approve the early credit college program, ECCP, and the Start College Now request as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Reineman, second by Ebert. Any discussion? Mr. Barney.
Yeah, for transparency, I have a son who has applied under this program. I'm not sure if I have to abstain from voting, but just to remove any potential conflict of interest, I will abstain from voting on this.
Okay. Anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Thank you. That passes. Moving on to Item B, Discussion and Action to Approve Teacher Contracts. Mr. Noack.
Thank you. We have two contracts this evening. First is Lynn Milbrath, a speech-language pathologist with the school district. This vacancy is created by resignation. At this time, this is a point-four F T E, limited-term position for fifty-eight days at a cost of eight thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. Second, Reagan Larson, special education teacher at County Line Elementary School, is filling the vacancy created by an FMLA leave. Reagan is currently an aide with us, but is a certified teacher in this area, and will be filling in this fifty-three-day position at point-six for six thousand, six hundred and point-five. We ask that you approve both of these limited-term contracts.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the point-four F T E limited-term contract for Lynn Milbrath at eight thousand, eight hundred and six dollars, and the zero-point-six F T E limited-term contract for Reagan Larson at six thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion by Barney, second by Reineman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to Item C, Discussion and Action to Approve Skills USA Overnight Travel Request and Expenses.
Yeah, the Twenty Twenty-Three Wisconsin Skills USA State Leadership and Skills Conference will be held April twenty-fifth through the twenty-sixth at the Alliance Energy Center in Madison. Eighteen students and two advisors will be going on the trip, while the conference students will compete in several occupational leadership and skilled events. The background shares total cost and breakdown, and that funding source is from the district athletics and activities budget.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the overnight travel request for eighteen students and two advisors to travel to Madison, Wisconsin from April twenty-fifth through the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, to attend the Skills USA State Leadership and Skills Conference with student lodging and advisor costs to be paid using funds from the Germantown School District Activities Budget for a total of nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Second. Thank you. A motion by Mr. Loth, second by Mr. Pollak. Any discussion?
This is a area that's very near and dear to me. It was called something else when I was in high school, but I participated in this when I was in high school, and before he graduated, my son participated in this also, so I wish all the students the best of luck.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to Item D, Discussion and Action to Approve DECA Overnight Travel Request.
Last month, I was here asking for approval for overnight requests for the state level. Our Distributive Education Club of America, DECA, will participate in the International Career Development Conference, which will be held April twenty-first through the twenty-sixth in Orange, at the Orange County Convention Center in Orlando, Florida. Six students, and our advisor will be going on the trip. The funding will be budgeted through fundraising as well as costs that the group has through their own club.
All right. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the overnight travel requests for six DECA students and one advisor to travel to Orlando, Florida from April twenty-first to the twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-three, to attend the DECA International Career Development Conference with expenses to be fundraised and paid for by the students for their expenses and budget funds for advisor expenses.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Reineman with the motion, Mr. Sotterberg with the second. Any discussion?
Just congratulations, and we can't wait to hear how well they've done.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to Item E, Discussion and Action to Approve FBLA Overnight Travel Request and Expenses.
So the State Future Business Leaders of America competition will be held April sixteen through the eighteen at the Green Bay Convention Center in Green Bay, Wisconsin. Fifty-eight students and six advisor chaperones will be going on the trip. We're asking that there's approval for the overnight request, and all budgeted items outlined will be paid for using funds from the Germantown School District Activities Budget.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the overnight travel request for fifty-eight students and six advisor chaperones to travel to Green Bay, Wisconsin from April sixteen through the eighteen of two thousand and twenty-three, to attend the FBLA state competition with all transportation and advisor chaperone expenses to be paid using funds from the Germantown School District Activities Budget for a total of two thousand, six hundred, sixty-three dollars, seventy-six cents.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pollak, second by Barney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to Item F, Discussion and Action to Approve Donations.
Our final new business item this evening is asking the Board of Education to consider the acceptance of the donations outlined below. County Line PTA five hundred, ninety-two dollars and eighty-eight cents towards County Line field trips. Germantown High School PTA three hundred dollars to our BSU student group. MacArthur PTA six hundred and fifty-four dollars to MacArthur Grade Four field trip. An anonymous donor, two thousand, five hundred dollars towards the state wrestling tournament and our wrestling team. GNK Enterprises pet supplies plus three hundred dollars towards our GHS choir. And another anonymous donor, one thousand, five hundred, fifty-five dollars and sixty-eight cents to Soul Town GSA a cappella ensemble. An anonymous donor for two hundred and fifty dollars towards our GHS choir cabaret event. Ultra Tool and Manufacturing, one thousand, one hundred dollars towards GHS choir. Patrick Pretty, two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents to the boys and girls track and field, for boys and girls track and field equipment. Jason Otto, three thousand dollars towards new speakers, mixer, amp, vocal microphone system for our softball field at GHS. Germantown High School PTA three hundred dollars towards the Skills USA competition. An advocate of our health care donated a high-powered microscope to our science department at Kennedy Middle School.
Outstanding. I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to thank the donors for their generosity and approve, excuse me, approve all donations as listed.
Second.
Ms. Reineman with the motion, Mr. Ebert with the second. Any discussion? Mr. Loth.
This is one that I, after reading all that policy, I get to this, and it really made my night, so I'd like to thank all the donors again. I mean, this is just incredible, all the donations that the school district has received, and it really made my night finishing up with this after all that reading. So thank you, donors.
Agreed. Thank you.
I think there's a typo on the three thousand-dollar donation for new speakers, softball fields at GHS. We don't have softball fields at GHS. We have them at Kennedy Middle School.
It'd be great if we had enough land for him here, right?
We do. But we need nine million dollars.
Exactly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Moving on to Item Nine, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Nineteen Point Eight-Five-One-D to Consider Strategies for Crime Detection and Prevention. Wisconsin State Statute Nineteen Point Eight-Five-One-C for Performance and Consider Employment, Promotion, Compensation, or Performance Evaluation Data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility.
I'll make a motion, as stated.
Second.
Mr. Sotterberg makes a motion. Ms. Reineman with the second. Roll call.
Medvin.
Yes.
Reineman?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Sotterberg?
Yep.
Loth?
Yes.
Ebert?
Yes.
Pollak?
Yes.
All right, we are in closed session. Thank you all for coming. Drive home safely.